Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our FY26 budget retreat. We're going to call a meeting in order. Ms. McKay, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Williams, here. Ms. Ramsey, here. Mayor Pons, here. Vice President, here. Ms. Kurt, here, here.
Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of council, all the E-team, members of the public, and distinguished guests from far and wide. Thank you for coming to this year's budget retreat. So we're going to get started and jump in. Our agenda should look pretty familiar. We don't deviate too much. Slides are a little bit more than last year, but we did take some out and added some new ones to tell the full story. So we'll start with looking at how we ended the fiscal year, because obviously you can't know what you're going to do next year if you don't know how you end it this year. So there would be a lot of estimates there. We'll talk about revenue forecasts. And that's when we'll have the HRPDC come up and talk about what the economy looks like in Hampton Roads, but also specifically to Williamsburg. We'll also talk about the debt package. And Davenport will come up and go over the existing debt and also some future debt that might be considered that the council has talked about. And then we'll dig into what really probably people are interested in, and that is what's the state of the future budget? And that'll be sort of our draft presentation. I'll tell you now that, as in most years, we worked very hard to at the budget retreat have a pretty solid grasp on what that budget's going to look like. And so a few dedicated staff members have spent a lot of sleepless nights this week trying to get a budget draft together. And it's not been an easy one. And then we'll talk about future fiscal health and some of the issues that we're watching and things that the council really needs to be thinking about. And this year, there's quite a few of them. So without further ado, we'll jump into it. We'll start with the budget flow process. And you know, the city of Williamsburg is a little bit different than most of Hampton Roads cities. We start earlier and we finish a little bit earlier. Like today, having an almost fully baked budget is a little advanced than the other localities that are still working through revenue forecasts and deciding what the picture's going to look like. So that allows us to move through this process fairly efficiently. Obviously, the budget is predicated on our strategic planning process, which we did in the fall, the GIO retreat. And then we begin the real budget work in October by sending out the outside agency invitations. So all the outside agencies that have got funding before and many prospective outside agencies that have contacted us during the year to ask about funding, get a letter informing them that we've opened the application process and that they can send then the necessary materials. They do that by November, and then it goes through the evaluation process, depending upon which agency it is. In October, we also issue budget guidance to the organization so that the department heads can start thinking about what their budget's going to look like. And then that budget guidance, we try to tell them what we think the budget's going to look like so that they know what to expect and how to shake those initial thoughts. We move from that into the actual budgeting process. And that means we do the budget development in December. We're here today at the budget retreat. And then in March, I will publish my proposed budget. And that'll be at the end of the month. And then in April, we have a month of public review of that budget. And the council gets to decide what they would like to change, if anything, about what's proposed. And then in May is when we would do the budget adoption. From there, we move into execution. So in July, the budget becomes effective, and we spend the year basically carrying out the budget that's been adopted. So how do we finish the year? So we start with FY24. You can see there we had a 47.6 million budget, over budget in the revenues by 1.1 million and under budget in expenditures by 1.2 million. That's where we want to be. So we finished the year fairly strong in '24. In '25, the numbers get much tighter. And that's a theme that we're going to see as we go through the presentation today. In FY25, we think the revenues are going to just be under budget by about $260,000. That's a new trend for us. And the expenditures will be under budget just barely by about $300,000. Okay? So this is going to be a very tight budget. So we're monitoring it pretty closely. This is what we think the proposed budget is going to look like. So this 110 million is the total budget for all six funds. As I have said for the last few years, that number is pretty inflated because of grand borrowing for projects. So this does include the new debt and proposed borrows for the library. And that's why it looks like this. So it is difficult to compare year over year because of those borrows for the various projects we're undertaking. So where does the money come from? This is what we think the revenues are going to look like. Local taxes is still our big, big number there for revenue generator. And in that local tax number is the taxes for sales tax, meals and lodging. So the taxes that we typically consider to be the tourism taxes. Property taxes at 25.9%. And miscellaneous, we got 26.4%. Now, that number is also misleading because what it reflects is anticipated payments from the other localities related to regional projects. So it's, there's more there than what really is there in terms of actual revenue from typical sources. Intergovernmental at 17.4%. And then the all other category, 11.9%. Real estate assessments. This is a big part of the story of what we're going to be telling you today. As you can see, the city has enjoyed pretty high increases in assessed values, but it's definitely curbing off. 2.9% is what we're expected to be this year. And we're still in the process of doing the assessment. So Derek is still doing his work. That number could change, up, down. It's not going to change substantially, though. So don't think that suddenly it's going to have a big number there. This is pretty close to what it's going to be. The story there is, of course, that as the federal government wrestles with inflation and they increase interest rates, it drives down what people can afford to pay for homes. And it also then deflates the exchange of homes on the open market. And certainly, Williamsburg has seen that. I think you'll see that as Ms. Johnson talks about what's going on in the interim. So we've started showing you this, I think, last year, which was how does that assessed value actually impact the residents? And so we've broken it into two categories. There are those people that pay mortgages, and there are those people that don't pay mortgages. The difference is monthly payments versus twice a year payments, right? And so you can see the different categories of increases based on that 2.8% increase on average in the real estate value. The regional tax comparison really hasn't changed a whole lot. We're still at 62 cents per $100 of value, which is the lowest in the region. And most of the tax rates actually that Williamsburg has, including the fees that we charge, are the lowest in the region by a substantial margin. Just some notes on the tax rate. We look at the Virginia Department of Taxation every year. Unfortunately, they don't update this data very often. So still, they are only reporting 2023. But as of 2023, we had the lowest real estate tax rate of any of the 38 cities in Virginia. We had, and Williamsburg is the closest, at 77 cents. Manassas is the highest at $1.45. And then for 2023, we actually were lower than 65% of the 95 counties in Virginia. So our tax rate is exceptionally low for the services that we offer. Now, we'll hear from the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. Nikki, come on up.
Nikki comes up. Past chair of the HRPDC and got to watch Nikki and work there quite often. She's done a fabulous job, so we're excited to have her here. She's much better than her predecessor.
That wasn't fair.
Who was also here we had?
Thanks, Mayor, for that conclusion. Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to impinge on Nikki's time just for a quick second to talk about the Planning District Commission, HRTPO, for folks that don't know. We're a regional organization. And as the mayor just said, he was a board chair for a while. And Mr. Trived also served on CEOs on our board as well. But we're a regional organization that serves all of Hampton Roads. And we are actually two organizations. And one, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. It's a state organization. There's 21 of them all over the state. They all do different things. Our focus is on emergency management, environmental education, housing and human services, planning and economics, which Nikki represents water resources. And then we're overlaid with DEI, Title VI, civil rights through the whole organization. On the transportation side, we have the long-range transportation planning section, transportation improvement plan, performance management, technical programs, rural transportation. And of course, DEI, Title VI, civil rights is interwoven in that as well. What we do essentially as a regional organization is we promote collaboration, cooperation with our member localities. We serve our localities. And so we're just trying to make sure that people are aware of what we're doing and where our role is. With that, I'll turn it over to the Starship.
Good morning, everybody. So I'm here just to provide a brief overview of the latest trends in the economy over the last year. And then at the end, we'll discuss prospects for future growth. So we'd like to start with the national economy because it leaves a lot of trends in our region especially. And the resilience of our national economy cannot be understated enough. If you think back, in 2022, we had a majority of economists who were actually predicting a recession looming. Yet, in 2023, we see inflation-adjusted GDP actually outpaces the prior year's rate of growth. We did see a slight slowdown for 2024. See, we went from 2.9%, 2.8%. But that's still well above the average rate of growth that we observed in the decade prior to the pandemic, as well as higher than even 2019 levels. So what this is signaling is more of a normalization to pre-pandemic trends rather than any type of sign of a downturn. Inflation, we know moderated significantly over the last few years. At the peak, in the summer of 2022, prices were up almost 9% year over year. But we initially made some incredible progress. So if you think by the end of 2023, we're already around 3%. But we have seen over the last year that that has stalled. So inflation has become sticky. We know the latest estimates released for January earlier this week saw an increase, largest month over month, year-over-year increase since 2023. So we are seeing a pushback up. A lot of that is due to food and energy prices. If you exclude them, you see that over the last few months, it's a little bit more stable. We know that things like the bird flu epidemic is really pushing on egg prices. Those are up about 15% just over the last month, 50% year over year. So with the bird flu, it's going to continue to be an issue moving forward. But the Fed's target is 2%. We're clearly stalled at that 2%. And what does that mean for the interest rate environment? Is that we're probably going to be facing an elevated interest rate environment in the near future at least. Now, even though we have had sticky inflation, we know that wages have, at the national level, they've outpaced inflation for the last 18 months. And what that means is it's really helped to boost consumer spending, both nationally and here in the region. So here we see retail sales for Hampton Roads, citizen inflation adjusted. In 2024, Hampton Roads retail sales outpaced the prior year's rate of growth. And that's significant because we did see a slowdown in the prior two years, just as inflation was eating into those gains and consumers were more selective in their buying. Labor markets have stabilized over the last year. We know that after the pandemic, it took about until mid-2023 to fully recover our civilian labor force and employment levels. And we have seen a slowdown. But if you look at the growth over the last year, it still outpaces those pre-pandemic levels slightly. So we're still right hovering around where we are, which is once again signaling that stabilization over time. And we see a very similar trend in Williamsburg. The city recovered all of the labor force and civilian employment that they lost during the pandemic. You see that line kind of flatten out over the last year. That's that stabilization that we're seeing. But part of this is due to this elevated interest rate environment that we're seeing. We know at least at the national level that firms are becoming a little bit more cautious when it comes to hiring and expanding. But they have been hesitant to fire. And so we know that nationally, hirings are at their lowest levels in more than a decade, but layoffs have remained relatively stable. So what does that mean for unemployment rates? We did see a slight uptick over the last year. Unemployment rates do usually trend. So we thought this was going to be moving higher, but it's actually stabilized, especially over the last few months. If you look for Williamsburg, which is the pink line there, we see we're at 3.9%, still historically low levels, especially when you compare around 2015, 2016, when we're still recovering from both the Great Recession and defensive sequestration here in the region. So what we are seeing is that stabilization rather than the downturn once again. We're still near those pre-pandemic levels. When we look at civilian jobs in the region, we're also seeing job growth begin to stabilize. We recovered all the jobs that we lost during the pandemic by early 2023. The growth over the last year is slightly above what we saw the decade prior to the pandemic. It's a slowdown from prior year, but it's a slowdown from that accelerated pace that we are experiencing over the last few years. So it is important to remember that Hampton Roads, especially in the decade prior to the pandemic, job growth in the region tended to lag behind the nation. That was due in part to the defense sequestration budget of 2013 that slowed growth in the region here relative to other areas, just as we were recovering from the Great Recession. We also saw that the region had a slower recovery in the initial aftermath of the pandemic, which is why you see that light blue line below. But what we've seen over the last year is job growth nationally is accelerating faster than it is in Hampton Roads. So this shows you as of December 2024, jobs were up 1.7% year over year compared to in the U.S., it was 1.3%. If we look at which industries have seen the largest job gains over the last year, see, it's been concentrated in healthcare, construction, and professional business services. Government jobs are up year over year, but they have yet to reach those pre-pandemic levels. And some of that is expected. We've seen in the Great Recession, local government jobs were slower to recover relative to other industries. And we are seeing that in the post-pandemic era as well. These are in hospitality, actually, though. Did make a full recovery in 2023, and they are up year over year. But we are seeing some signs of a slowdown in tourism overall. We can see here that hotel revenues, this is inflation adjusted, are down year over year. And we think this does have somewhat to do with what we're seeing at the national level, this bifurcation of hotel performance. So with sticky inflation, we're seeing the demand for travel among low-income and middle-income households slowing. Yet, on the other end, upscale luxury markets are still seeing strong demand. And so we think that that's being reflected in the Hampton Roads data as well, too. Defense spending did increase in 2024. That's a third straight year of rising defense spending within the region. Estimates for 2024 also outpaced 2019 levels, which is positive. We know that defense authorized for 2025 is supposed to increase if nothing changes. So we do expect that to continue to boost the economy here in the region. However, we know that the timeline for appropriations is still very much in question this year, especially as it has been over the last few years. Homes. So if we look at the housing market, as was mentioned earlier, we've seen some significant slowdown over the last few years. We know that initially during the pandemic, we saw a historic surge in home sales. And then as we saw with mortgage rates, we see that significant decline over the last few years. However, that decline did slow in 2024 regionally. We can see that the number of homes sold in the region is roughly in line with the prior year. But we are still well below 2019 levels. We're actually at levels last seen in about 2015. See, a similar trend here in Williamsburg that surged. However, we did see a further decline in the last year. But if we want to understand why home sales have declined, mortgage rates, right? So we saw them peak at about 7.6%. It did come down slightly over the last year and then bump up a little bit. So as the latest for January, the average 30-year fixed monthly mortgage rate is about 7%. And so what this has created over the last few years is what's locked in effect. If you bought a house at 2.5% in the summer of 2021 and you want to sell, you're now facing 7% because the majority of mortgages today are fixed rate. They're not adjustable. And so a lot of people have kind of done a sit-back, wait-and-see, wait for mortgage rates to drop. And that's really had an effect on existing home sales especially. We are seeing some people, after a few years, you can only wait so long. If you're looking for a job, you're eventually going to have to move. And so I think some people are just going to have to face that higher mortgage rate. And that's why we have seen somewhat of a slowdown in that decline in the home sales overall. But existing home sales have really slowed because of mortgage rates. And at the same time, we are seeing new construction also decline. We know in this elevated interest rate environment, on top of higher construction costs, inflation, it's going to, of course, weigh down on new construction here. We already had an undersupply of new homes in the region prior to the pandemic. We never reached our pre-Great Recession levels. And so this condition has only worsened. And this isn't just for the region. This is at the national level, that housing shortage. But you do see a significant decline even for 2024. And so how the further sticky inflation and then especially construction costs is going to continue to put pressure on this moving forward. But if we want to understand why prices are still so high, you only have to look at supply, right? And so with not enough homes on the market, we can see that the month supply of existing inventories has yet to reach those pre-pandemic levels. So in the height of the pandemic in 2022, it took about a month to take off, to sell off all the existing inventory of homes for sale within the region. We're now at about 2.2 months, but still below the 2.9 months that we saw prior to the pandemic. And if you look, even just in 2014, we're at 6.6 months. And so if there's not an adequate supply to meet demand, you're going to continue to see that surge in home values that we've seen over the last five years. So if we look here, this is just taking the change in the typical value of a home between February 2020, month prior to the pandemic, to the latest for December. We see that the typical value of a home is up about 37% in Williamsburg compared to 41% in Hampton Roads, upwards of 45% nationally. Now, over the last year, we are seeing slightly faster growth, both regionally and in the city. You can see last year, we were up about six percentage points. In Williamsburg, compared to a little bit more than seven percentage points compared to four percentage points nationally. So we are seeing slightly faster growth here in the region relative to the national average. And on the other end, it's important to point out, Hampton Roads home values typically rise slower than the nation. That was also true prior to the pandemic. But rents have been rising faster, right? And that was also true prior to the pandemic. But we know that rents since January 2020 are up almost 50% here in the region, almost 40% nationally. We know that in 2023, those are the latest estimates for cost burden. So we measured affordability, common measure is known as cost burden. So what is the percentage of households in your area that are spending 30% or more of their income on housing? And we know that in the region, the percentage of cost burden households increased in 2023. They also increased nationally. But the largest increase was among renter households, not borrowers, right? Even with those mortgage rates, they are especially seeing a higher burden. And so that's why we are at the PDC working on our regional housing strategy because affordability is really an issue moving forward. What can we do at the local level to really push progress, both in building new construction, looking for where the gaps are in our housing strategy overall, to really push this? Because this is going to slow population growth. It slows overall growth. The affordability issue is a national issue, but it's going to have to be attacked locally as we see moving forward. So 2025, I don't know. It feels like the only certainty right now is uncertainty, right? It's very uncertain times. But we do know that the fundamentals of the economy do remain strong, as you saw. We are not below those pre-pandemic growth rates. We're right in line. We saw accelerated growth after the pandemic. Now we're seeing the stabilization. There is a lot of question moving forward. Defense spending, as I said before, if unchanged, it will continue to provide a boost. The Fed chair reiterated just last week that with labor markets stabilized and inflation now remaining sticky, he sees no need to cut the Fed rates. So we are facing a higher than longer interest rate environment. But as I said before, housing affordability is going to continue to be an issue moving forward. Now, the uncertainty around policy, I think we've had like three different, five different tariff announcements in the last few weeks. So there's a lot of questions moving forward. What effect is that going to have on inflation or even new business deals overall? There's going to be a lot of wait-and-see until we see how this kind of all plays out. So that's going to be a question moving forward. We know that there's a significant push to reduce the federal workforce. Know that we have a relatively higher share of federal civilian workers than other areas. And so that will likely have an outsized impact on the region.
Thank you. So it relates to housing values. In your experience and your studies, how often do you see housing values drop? We've seen a steady increase in Williamsburg and in Hampton Roads. But 2008, there was probably some valuation drops. How likely do you think that is, that we may see that in the future?
Yes, that was a big thing during the Great Recession. We all believed that housing values would never fall nationally, right? And they did. You are going to see that some more localized impact. I think with the constraints on supply, I don't see that in the future. And those constraints on supply existed prior to the pandemic. And so I don't think that we are facing a downturn necessarily. There's a lot of question, though, so who knows today? But based off of what we're seeing in terms of the fundamentals, I don't see a significant decrease in overall prices. I see a slowdown, but not a decline.
Any other questions?
Just a question on interest rates. I mean, you hear a lot of speculation. Obviously, we won't see that 2.4, 2.5 again. But do you, in your professional experience, what do you see? Do you see they're going to hang here at 7% for quite a while? Or any decline whatsoever?
So the Federal Reserve controls the federal funds rate, which influences those interest rates. And so as I said earlier, the Federal Reserve just, the chair just said last week that with labor markets stabilized and at the same time, we're seeing sticky inflation, he has no plans for further rate cuts at the immediate moment, which means that we don't see any significant decline in mortgage rates. We also know that mortgage rates are, in some ways, influenced by inflation expectations. And so how current inflation situation and even tariffs moving forward play into that? It might increase again. It might continue to stabilize moving forward. But there's a lot of questions. How the Fed will affect that in the immediate? Right now, he's signaling that he's not going to make a significant push to push the staff. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. So I think there might be a question in here, but I'm not sure. I'm just trying to zoom out and make sense of a few things and make sure I have it straight in my head. And so we have, from what I understand, then, people who are, who own a home, who are kind of waiting, like you said, kind of waiting it out because of that differential in mortgage rates. So they're kind of hanging tight. And then we have a supply cost issue that's driving kind of a flat line in initial housing. And then we have a group of people who don't own a home, who are renting, who are paying like escalated rents. So what we end up having then is a situation where people aren't moving into a new home, clearing out room for the people who are renting, who may want to get into the housing market while also not having housing built in order to get people to be able to buy out of a rental situation. Is that kind of the, just the big picture of where there are bottlenecks, if you will? And basically, like the movement and the growth of people? Is that be like home, home? Okay.
No, you actually explained it well. It's all bad, right? That's what it's saying.
Just wanted to make sure it was as bad as I thought it was in my head. Okay, just, yeah, just to clarify. Yeah.
I just want to reiterate again, this was an issue before the pandemic. All of these factors were already there, and then it was just exacerbated by that current condition. Existing home sales represent about almost 90% of the total homes sold in the region. And so new construction is only about 10%. And so that mortgage rate effect affected really existing home sales more than anything. And then, of course, inflation, construction costs is going to affect that new construction, which was already depressed.
Yeah.
And then on the renter side, you have that push to increase prices because of everything that was happening. So it's twofold, right? I think that the conditions have cooled a little bit, right? If you look at the home values that we were just looking at, we're definitely not in this spike area anymore. We have flattened off a little bit. So those conditions are somewhat cooling, but nowhere near where we need to be in order to address the affordability problem.
Okay, thank you.
So to compound this, I would imagine some people are paying more rent per month than what a mortgage payment might be. But if there are homes available, how many of those renters have the down payment necessary to purchase a home?
Yes, and that's becoming increasingly, increasingly an issue moving forward is with home values rising so fast, can the average person even afford a down payment unless you have support from family or you have significant savings? And so that really puts in an additional burden for younger people especially to move in. So that's additionally a really big problem moving forward and how can we address that, I think, is one of the big issues moving forward because the down payment is one of the biggest burdens moving in, right? Once you get the mortgage payment in, especially if you're near 2%, you're living large compared to some renters that are coming in.
Yeah, it's like this cycle, you know, you want to buy a home, but you have to save up for the down payment, but you're spending more on the rent, so therefore you can't save for your down payment.
Yeah, I don't see how anybody who doesn't have that family support could have enough to just put down that down payment by themselves. It's, it's really difficult nowadays.
I have a quick question. Thank you for the presentation. So as we see inflation rates rising, but also the workforce stabilizing, I just wanted to ask, do we see the, I guess, the adjustment with wages kind of meeting the rise in inflation?
We have seen that over the last 18 months. We did see wages outpace, and that wasn't true in the initial aftermath of pandemic, right? When that initial surge of inflation was happening 2021, 2022, it was moving faster than regions. But over the last 18 months, we have seen that outpace. Now, with labor markets stabilizing, we are going to see wage growth stabilize a little bit more. And so what that means for inflation moving forward, how much inflation is going to grow based off of a lot of uncertainties, is that going to move faster than wages? That is a question before. I can't really answer, but it might be a problem.
Any other questions? Thank you, Nikki. Oh, yes.
Right there. I just, I wanted to ask, you know, as the administration continues to be pressured to deal with inflation, what are the tools that they have? The Fed chair is saying he's not going to lower rates or increase rates. What do you think is going to happen?
So the president does not have much power to control inflation. That is usually with the Fed. We do see that you can do policies. I mean, we saw the previous administration do the Inflation Reduction Act to try to reduce the burden on inflation. But overall, it's more market forces. It's what the Fed is doing and how markets are responding to current conditions. And so there really isn't a lot the president can do to affect prices. There are some policies that are possible, nothing that really pops out of the back of my head, but usually when we think about inflation, it really is a market force versus a specific policy that can be done. If you're looking at egg prices right now, unless you can fix the bird flu, there's nothing you can do, right? Unless you want to add stuff, so that's not going to change the price overall.
So the primary tool is the interest rate?
Interest rates, absolutely, yeah.
And you mentioned the tariffs, that at this point, we don't know what's going to stick or not, or on what products, or for how long, or anything like that.
Yes, so we've seen aluminum and steel tariffs. Yesterday, we saw announcement of reciprocal tariffs. We don't know if the tariffs for Mexico and Canada are going to come back in March. There's a lot of questions, but we know that those tariffs are paid by the importer. And depending on how responsive consumers are to the price of your product, changes in the price of your product, that change, that extra tax is usually passed on to the consumer.
Trying to recall in a presentation at the HRPDC, I think you talked about growth in population in Hampton Roads area. Have we been on a decline and are we seeing that tick back up?
Yes, we did see an increase in population here in the region. I think it did slightly outpace the prior year. We have had relatively slower growth in the region, long-term trends of the drawdown defense and military within the region. But overall, even at the state level, we did see a positive rebound, I think, for the first time in nearly a decade, we saw positive domestic migration to the region. Some of that was due to the housing factors that we were seeing, that people were stuck, right? And so they weren't moving. There was some of that, but population is definitely going to be affected, especially by the housing trends, right? People move if they have a house to live in. How is that affecting overall growth? But yes, we did see an increase because over, we want to remember that, you know, the pandemic started in 2020, but you really saw the full effect of all the deaths from the pandemic in 2021, 2022. And so that's when we really saw a steep decline. And then over the last two years, we are seeing a more serious bounce back in population growth. But we know that over long-term, birth rates are declining. The gains in population from that natural change, the births minus deaths, that's becoming a smaller and smaller gain in terms of population. That's not just in the United States, that is worldwide, we're seeing that slowdown in birth rates. And so as we were talking in our presentation yesterday, when we think about how to attract people to the region, we know that it's going to come down to domestic migration and international migration. There's a push to reduce international migration, right? Then we are going to be competing with other regions more and more for population. And so that's something to think about moving forward as well.
Well, it's also something to think about when we think about new home construction. You know, if we have growth in population, but we're not adding supply to the market it causes for price increases in rents and home valuations.
Yes.
So one of the ways to address more affordable housing, whatever spectrum that is, is by adding supply.
Yes, and it's also on the other side, right? How much population are we losing because we don't have the adequate supply housing to attract people to the region?
Anything else? Nikki, thank you. Appreciate you coming over today. I know what it's like to make that trek.
Yes, you do. Especially early in the morning.
Well, thank you so much, Steve. Thank you for coming over. Mr. Trump?
All right, so how does that translate to us? So let's look at some local forecasted trends. You know, this is, there are two main storylines today. I'm going to give you them at the end, but we'll see if you can catch on to them as we go through. This is one of them, right? So for years now, we've been talking about how these lines are coming together right here, right? And how that is going to be something that we have to address. And we are rapidly approaching the point where it cannot be a point, right? And this year is a clear indicator of that. So as we talk about this, I want you to pay close attention to, this is reverberating what I showed you in that first slide about how we're going to finish 25, as these revenues match expenditures and what was budgeted. So, you know, the days of having an overflow and plenty are probably behind us as all of these normal revenue streams that we rely on slow down, particularly tourism. I think that's the one that's hurting us the most, but you can't ignore the real estate tax rate either, right? Those assessed values being depressed and even more depressed in Williamsburg than they are in our other localities in the region is part of the story.
You say depressed, just not growing as?
Not growing quite as much. Exactly.
So depressed.
So here's another look at that same data. You can see as you, as you dig in and look at these very small lines, the blue lines are the estimate. And you can see that some of these that normally are always growing are actually falling behind. Look at business licenses, that's a good example. Now, we can blame that on our new commissioner because she just left the room, but, you know, we put a little pressure on her to pick that up. You know, some of these normal paths that are always growing are not. And that is really causing some concern in terms of what we can expect for revenue and expenses.
And so the business licensing, is that because of sales of the current businesses or new businesses?
Growth.
Both?
I think it's probably a combination of both. It's growth, it's also the pay rate. You know, one of the things, you know, revenues are very complicated because you're not only estimating how much somebody's going to pay, but you also have to estimate how many people are actually going to pay what they're supposed to. And as, you know, the economy is troubled, as inflation rates go up, some businesses just can't afford to pay what they're supposed to. And so they'll either be late or they won't pay at all. And so that's a, that's a factor. Now, in Williamsburg, we've always enjoyed very high collection rates. You heard yesterday in the annual report presentation that 99%. That's remarkable for a locality in terms of real estate payments, in my experience, anyway.
And I think we've seen, I don't know what the number of business licenses are, but we've seen some, I think, significant restaurants grow out of business, you know, and transform into more of a mom and pop type facility, which may not generate as much sales.
I mean, you know, I'm not an expert in this, so I'm way off my base of knowledge, but it doesn't take a genius to realize that the retail market is changing exponentially. The formulas that used to work don't work, and the future of that business, in my opinion, is uncertain.
Consumer, when you say retail's changed, what I think you're saying is that the way we buy goods has shifted. A lot of those sales tax still come to the city.
Thank goodness.
Right.
Thank goodness.
Well, I point out the closing of some of the restaurants, businesses along Richmond Road particularly, and I think that's in large part because of the shift in travel patterns that we see and the shift of, you know, the creation of Midtown, I'm sorry, New Town, which is, you know, drawing a lot of traffic off of Richmond Road and business off of Richmond Road, so.
Absolutely.
There hasn't been a real refresh in some of those businesses.
So this is the debt package the city's currently, it's the current debt. So you can see here, the outstanding debt is in blue and the payout schedule there, fairly typical really for how that operates. And then the debt services at the bottom. So all of that factored in to this prepared budget. And with that, we're going to turn it over to Dan Hoare to talk to us about the debt package more.
Good morning, sir. Dynamic duo.
Trio now.
Trio. Can we bring the young guns?
I noticed Drew has left the room.
It's because you're going to blame him for everything, like he did the commissioner revenue.
So while everybody was getting their books, I would point out, anyone who's in the audience, we always get books for people if we don't have enough, by all means. This is certainly public information. Drew, do you want to say anything? Take a look to, yes, okay. So let me just introduce everyone. I think you know Jimmy and I. Jimmy's one of my partners. He's been with me now for 20-plus years. He's a recovering bond lawyer. So again, I'm going to kind of get over that. Tyler Smith is one of our younger fellows. He's been with us now about five years, and he is handing out some books. Again, David Rose, and we are really humbled and most appreciative to be here this beautiful morning. So with that said, I'm going to do this first presentation, which is about the general fund, basically. And then later on, Jimmy's going to cover the utility fund, thanks to the work we've been doing. I will start by saying you've got, and I think you know this, a remarkable staff. You couldn't be here. Just the way all of this is done is so incredibly professional, concise, and we just enjoy being here. So thank you. No particular actions are being asked for today, and, you know, maybe some things you may want to do, but again, we'll defer to Barbara and Drew in terms of sort of next steps. Okay, so hopefully everybody can see if I'm standing here, is that okay, Drew? All righty. I'm going to move quickly. We've got a big book, we've got some appendix information, it won't go through, but like we've done in years past, this is our third or fourth time getting in front of you, I want to frame everything. Our role, for those of you who may not be aware, we are the independent financial advisor to the city as a result. Not here to sell anything, not here to recommend, go buy something, things of that nature. We're here to help you work with staff to figure out what you want to do, what are the financial implications of that, good, bad, and different. And also, you go see how all that rolls up into some capital planning, as well as how it's looked at by independent third parties. One of the things we like to do, we feel like, and Drew did this previously, let you see, particularly Nikki as well, how do you compare, not only to the region, some of your peers, know to or like, but you get a sense of that in a few moments, and then also to nationally, how do things look? So we try to hit on both of those, and again, you can see where you are, certainly in this region. So I think the important takeaway today for everyone is the city enjoys excellent credit ratings by the outside two major rating analyst firms. They don't care a lot about Virginia, they don't care a lot about Williamsburg, they're truly a disinterested party, or parties. They're very difficult and harsh. They like you. They like what you're doing. They like the fact that we're meeting today in February, that you're talking, you're ahead of your budgets, that Drew is here telling you both good and things that are cautionary. But the big takeaway, as your financial advisor, I can tell you, you are in a good situation. You are in a very good position. And part of that is because, again, there's a lot of planning and thinking ahead of time to make sure that we're on top of the things that HRPDC just talked about. Okay, so Moody's, you're one step away from AAA, Standard and Poor's, you're at AAA. I can remember being involved with you when you first got your ratings, you were down in this category here, and that was probably about 25 years ago. Come a long way. All right, as Drew indicated, in the region, counties and cities, your tax rate, again, very favorable on the real estate side. You can see, of course, all the way out. And then when we look at, as you indicated earlier, of all, there's some 37 or some odd cities, there you are. What does this tell us? Couple things. We know that a lot of the local revenues are the biggest drivers. For most of these places, it's the opposite, not most, but almost all of them. But we also know it means that while nobody wants to raise real estate property taxes anywhere, whether you're here or down here, you have that ability. The rating agencies look at that and say, you've got flexibility, so you're not going to price yourself out of, if you want to call it competitiveness, both in the region and state line. That's how they think about it, that's how we think about it. Okay, meals tax, you're going to notice, you know where you are. Couple of important things that we're cognizant of. In the next year or so, that effective, we'll call it governor, that's on yours and your neighbors, that goes away, gives you flexibility. And that's important because, again, these are big drivers. I would point out, if you look at Richmond, it's at 7.5%. We did something a few years ago, which is we went from 6% to 7.5%, and we found no appreciable downside as it related to taking in those dollars. What was interesting, though, at the same time we did that, Henrico County went from 0% to 4%, and they had a referendum. And Chesterfield County, the other complementary county, had a referendum to go from 0% to 2%. That failed. So we have a very diverse, if you want to call it, meals tax in the Richmond area. The cities and part of their region there did a study. No material differences were found before and after as it related to meals and people going and using them. And that meals tax, even for Richmond, continues to grow. Okay, lodging tax, very similarly, you can see where Norfolk, Virginia Beach is, you could see where you are. Again, that's another one of those taxes that that moratorium goes away. That's important for us to know, has some flexibility. Okay, assessed values, a whole lot of your assessed value here doesn't show up because it's not taxable. That's just the taxable side. So CW and the college and et cetera, all of that, and yet your number is solid. But really what's important is when you look at that relative to your per capita, anything above about 100, 110,000 is considered strong. You're at almost twice that level. So that's just on the taxable side. It's a very solid number. It really is why you're up, in part why you're in that AAA category. It's a good, good number. It's a strength.
David, if I could just replay, going back to the rating, we have great ratings, and some may say, why aren't we the best in both? Just give a brief overview. I mean, I know that with the, with Moody's, we cannot be AAA rated or.
Well, it's not that we cannot be, it's just they look at this, and it's a very small population, and that is, that is a prejudice that they have, which I understand. They say if something goes wrong, you know, the ability to just have a smaller populace to sort of pay for whatever it is, to take care of it. And that's just their, that's been their focus. We had that similarly over at the county, believe it or not, a bunch of years ago. They're at the AAA, but they were struggling when it came to the way they thought about counties. They'd like to see counties be around 100,000 in population. They've come off that over the years, but that's just another, sort of more of their things that they, they've got to look at.
That was the observation that I want you to point out. So thank you.
But again, being double A plus is obviously, you know, very But again, being AA plus is obviously, you know, very, very strong, and those terms on the left-hand side that we use, those are not our terms, that's their terms when they describe a credit. So I just point that out. All right. So a couple of things, and again, we look at you and try to look at every local government, what makes you different from others? And as I said earlier, as Drew pointed out, your local taxes are so robust, this is a tourism area, it's a destination. As a result of that, we also know, just like with COVID, when the tourism area is in effect shut down, we want to make sure we have really ample reserves. So we have got a very solid, what we call unassigned fund balance, fancy way of saying rainy day fund, monies that are not necessarily programmed in for a particular budget, not supposed to be programmed in for a budget, they're there for emergencies, et cetera. And you can see, your number is very solid, but as a percentage, that's really the key, you really are well above all of the various comparatives. And that's not by accident, that's by design, and that shows you have done a very good job over the years of having excess revenues, making sure you put that into that, in effect, unassigned fund balance. One more point about that, let me go back if I could. Okay. One more point about this, for those in the audience, and I think council may know this, those excess dollars that are sitting there, they're being very productive, actually, they're not unproductive. In fact, when you look at it, those dollars are turning off, or turning out real interest earnings, which helps the general fund. So when Drew and Barbara talk about the revenues of a given budget, one of the benefits you get is all those dollars are kicking off well over seven figures to help make it less pressure on the real estate, less pressure on the lodging and the meals, all the other various taxes. So I want to point that out, but that also is the major driver for helping you get your AAA and AA plus, is really having a robust fund balance. That's perhaps the most important thing the rating agencies look at, right or wrong, but that's how they view it. Okay. Debt profile, as Drew indicated, we'll just do a little bit more breakdown by fiscal year. What you hear have is a very nice dropdown, that's important. It's not by accident, it's by design. We try to pay our debts off rapidly, we try to put ourselves in a position so that when new debt comes in, and we certainly have done new debt, and we want to have more to do, we're able to layer that in and not have as dramatic an impact on the overall needs and subsequent budgets. And that's part of it. So again, in the 25 fiscal year we're in, this is just a tax support, as we call it, it's a little over $3.3 million. Again, we're well able to take care of that. Okay. We have some policies, so if you want to call them guidelines, ways to stay within best practices. This one is add debt to that taxable assessed value. It's a mouthful, I think the important point is, optically, you can see where we are, very strong position, the lower the better, you can see where that sort of range is, we don't like to go above 3%, and we're less than half of that. Now, it'll go up with some of the other debts that are planned, but we're still going to be in a good shape, and that's important. Next one, I like to call this your credit card. How many pennies of every dollar are going to debt service in the upcoming budget? Right now, in the 25 fiscal year, slightly over six cents on every dollar. I like to tell people, if you think about it, if you're fortunate to have a mortgage, like we were talking about earlier, banks that lend you don't like to see you go about 25 cents on every dollar, you're a fifth of that, you're at 6% on every dollar. Again, in very good stead to take care of it, we like to have a cap that you'd live for the city of about 12 cents or 12%, and you're going to see, we'll be within that over the foreseeable future. Lastly, on policies, we have a thing called a payout ratio, fancy way of saying, every decade, in 10 years, we like to pay about half of our principal down. Give you a sense, again, with the old mortgage, if you have a mortgage, after 10 years, we've paid off about 25% of our principal, we're double that. Really, high-end cities and counties tend to be even higher than that. That really, for us, is a function of having a whole lot of projects to do in a relatively short period of time, and that's just the way it is. But again, we try our best to stay as much as we can and borrow money within these sort of ranges, if we can, and that's what we've been doing. Okay. Let's turn to capital plan, the current one that you have. We've been fortunate to work closely with your staff, we probably do that three, four, or five times a year, and we constantly are talking about where your planning is, where are you moving to, how do we do these things? And so that borrowing program was about $55 million. That was the thing, we came here last year, some of the big projects, the police station and some other things. And we also talked about some other needs, from city library, et cetera. And then we did this and looked at all of this in a certain way to make sure we have money when we need it. And also, lastly, looking at refundings. One of the reasons a good, solid rating, lower interest rates, lower interest rates being, we're that much more attractive to maybe refund some of our outstanding debt, and we've got, we think, one of those opportunities right now. Okay. And that program of the roughly $55 million, we've done a project here back in calendar year 22, fiscal year 23, we did about $24.5 million. You can see what that was for. Then we did some more borrowing, and look at the rate there, at the time, it was a solid rate, about 4.5%. We think we can do better, but we're going to talk about that in a moment. Again, only positive, we haven't factored that in at all. So lastly, coming up, to finish off those programs of that roughly $55 million, is about a $20 million planned borrowing. That would be basically not this fall, but next fall. That could move a little bit, if rates look very attractive, we might move that up. If they don't look attractive at the time, we don't have to do permanent financing, we can do some interim financing, but hopefully, if we keep within the range that we're in right now, we'll most likely do permanent financing at that timeframe. Okay. So that's that. Now, we need to talk with your staff about a new project, pretty exciting, Peacock Hill Park. That project, as we understand it, is around $6.5 million, it's expected to open literally in about 15, 16 months. And so the talk was, how to look at all this, how to fund this, what's the smart way to do that? We understand that it is possible, probable, that there'll be grants and other dollars that will help take care of this, maybe even some of that excess fund balance. But what our recommendation with staff is being, or is, I should say, is while we're in this developmental process, let's turn around and let's get those $6.5 million secured. You may recall earlier, I said, rather than go directly to that excess fund balance, we were earning 4.5% to 5%, to 5.5% on those monies towards the general fund, we think it's better off to do some interim financing and probably borrow at a rate that's going to be 4.5% or lower. And that's the important takeaway here. We did this, we'll get, for example, 11% for the moment, and we said, we do this and set this up right, we can do an interim financing, and then as grants come in or other dollars come in, we could pay down that principal earlier if we want, or we can wait till the end of basically 2030, 2031 timeframe, and that would be a good prudent use of your money, and also put you in a position to see where things really are with grants and other dollars over the course of the next four or five years. So I know, moving quickly, not asking you to say yea or nay on that for the moment, but again, we just wanted you to see how this could be done, we think it can be done very responsibly. And the last point I'd make is, when you see some of the numbers that we've done for estimates, we've already factored these in, and I'll show you that in a moment. So I said, show it to, here it is. What we did here was, we actually took that $20 million, as if it's already been borrowed, layered that in, we also layered in the interest on the previous page for the Peacock Hill Park. So you could see, again, even when we do that, we stay way within our policy, and then also here, within our policy as relates to that credit card. One of the things I will point out is, we are very conservative about what we'll call the denominator. We've historically grown that denominator at a lower rate than what you've been experiencing, even with all the changes that have been talked about by Nikki a few minutes ago, we still go on the lower than, more than likely side. So again, we're conservative and think about it that way. I'll stop for a minute, any questions? I know I'm throwing a whole lot at y'all. Got it. All right.
So what, you saying that the money for the library wouldn't be barged until the fall of...
Next fall, I guess, not this fall, but by next fall. And I'm thinking, again, we talked about that, what's interesting, and I'm glad Nikki pointed this out, for the average purchaser of a mortgage, those rates are like at 7%, and it's higher than it's been in some time, and has been some pressure. What's interesting, though, for us, us meaning the local governments, the not-for-profit world, we're borrowing until legislation changes, if it does, on a tax-exempt basis, those rates are actually quite good. So we actually see that marketplace being very strong, and with the exception of a couple of years when we had that extraordinary situation with COVID, where rates were literally down at 2% long-term fixed rates, we're seeing these rates now really bumping along at what is basically 40- and 50-year lows for tax exemption, the world that we're borrowing, and we, meaning, again, Williamsburg. So what does all that mean and all that impact? So that 45, $55 million, I threw in here, if it was now upwards of 61 for the Peacock Hill, and we said, again, if the borrowing money that we're talking about, that 20 million was at 5%, again, we're in that today, if we were borrowing for that money today, fixed rate for 20 years, it's probably going to be in the high threes, high threes. But yet, we use purposely a high interest rate, that's our conservative approach. We basically need the equivalent of three to four pennies over time to take care of that. And we're not suggesting, and maybe you might want to touch on this, Drew, in terms of where we stand on that, I think that'd be helpful.
Yes. For the last few years, we've been planning on this borrow, the only thing that we weren't necessarily planning on is the 6.5 for the Children's Park, that's the only new component from what you've seen in the past. And so the budget that's presented actually accommodates the debt service for both of those projects.
So that's already factored into your budget and all of that. And I think it's important, because if you go back and look at the prior presentations that Jimmy and I did with you, it was giving you sort of those ranges so that you know what is the pressure. Now, one or two years ago, those pennies were not there, but we went through, we've done with staff, with you, and approving and coordinating on the budgets, these have been factored in. So there is no surprises here from anyone. To the contrary, the good news here is it's all been already factored in and layered in, it's what remains, is just for us to borrow that money and hopefully do better than this, I think.
For the council to approve the projects and then borrow.
All right. All right. So let's talk about a potential refunding I mentioned earlier, that was rated about 4.59. The good news here is that that's a fixed rate. And why I say the good news is because we set that up purposely, because rates might have gone up as opposed to gone down. So again, rates are not going to go above that, that's locked in, but what we do have the ability to do at this time is to actually take that out without penalty, save money if the markets hold. So one of the things, we'll be back asking your permission, is to do what we call a dual-track approach, look at what we call direct bank loans, and look at the state program, VRA. Now, the direct bank loans could be a couple of even parts there, might look at a underwriting through a direct bank, or again, just actually the bank coming up with the monies, a couple ways to look at it. We at Davenport are indifferent, all we care about, what's the best result for the city. So that said, for the moment, just give you a sense of it, the direct bank loan, if the cost was 4%, our savings would be about, almost close to $700,000, that's after any cost of issuance, VRA, the state programs, some more bells and whistles, it's only about 135,000, 140,000, so pretty big differential. Interestingly enough, the interest cost is not so different, but the all-in cost is considerably higher, that's because VRA has a bunch of set costs that you have to pay as a borrower going through them. So again, interesting here, though, VRA borrows at the same, in effect, credit quality that you do, it's a split, AAA, AA plus, and a lot of people use that. For you, because you're already there, you don't really get any benefit from that. But there's a couple of different ways, again, we just, doesn't cost us anything more as a city to go and have that application in there and to be in a ready mode, and that's how we're looking at it.
So just highlight that for a minute. So in other words, what the VRA offers, the state program, is localities that have a less attractive borrow profile because their credit ratings are lower, they can actually throw their debt into the VRA and enjoy the same rates that we have.
Going back to the previous slide, if you took advantage of that, or maybe the one prior to that, does that affect the, does that affect that four, equivalent of four cent?
Yeah, it actually goes down a little bit. Yeah, it would go down a little bit. But, and this again, is it's not a large amount of debt relative to the overall portfolio, but yes, it only helps it, that's correct.
Take advantage of any opportunities from over interest.
You let us do that before, I mean, again, important for people to realize, when we do a refinancing, if we do, we're not extending the final maturity, so we're not pushing any debt out, it's that same final maturity, we're just simply exchanging what might be a 4.5 or so percent rate for what might be 4% or, you know, something of that nature. I would point out, a little tantalizing, yesterday, one of our colleagues did a 10-year financing in the bank and public markets, if you would, in Georgia, and the all-in cost there was the low threes. So again, that's why we wear dark outfits, because we're supposed to be negative, it's a dismal sign, Thomas Malthus said that, you know, so that's why we wear dark suits. So we opt shit, I don't want to overly do this, but you know, again, we'll see what happens. Because as Nikki before said, who knows where rates are moving and what have you, but at least there's no harm if they can appear.
So much cost to refinancing?
So any cost refinancing, we had factored that in already, that's how we look at this, but if, let's say it dies, basically, pretty much very limited of any costs. If we do a public sale as part of that direct approach, I could see us having some rating-ish costs, and that might be, I said, if you want to call it a cost, and we'll talk some more to staff, and we'll come back to you and give you a little more of that, what's the risk reward? If we do a direct bank loan, just direct to the banks, where they buy your debt, there's going to be no cost. If they don't give us rates that we like, then there's no harm, no foul, and we've done that before, so that's an easy one.
Thank you.
Again, had this, talked about this earlier, so this just simply is sort of a timeline, our thinking is, with some blessing, we can come back to you later on, especially in March, and talk about whether or not it works and what have you. So again, it's an evolving process, you know, we would like to informally know if council is good with us working with staff to continue to move the ball forward on the potential refundings, you know, again, nothing formal is necessary, we don't even need that until such time as if we're to move, the fastest could be in March. That said, it doesn't need a public hearing, because this debt has already been issued, we're not adding any new debt. We're not adding any new debt. We're simply, again, trying to do some funding.
But to that, I mean, I think it makes sense that we look at our debt and overall obligations moving forward, and if there's a way to reduce that expense, it would be responsible for us to do that.
Okay, Mayor. That's, that's it. So again, just page two of that, and that's really all. So again, final observations. We've issued certain borrowing debt already. We still have some others to finish with the blessing. Peacock Hill, again, if that's the will of, of council, that could be also taken care of this springtime and into the summer and the refinancing as well. And then lastly, we just point out that, again, all of this, even with that additional 20 million in Peacock Hill, meets if not exceeds your, your policies. So we don't see any negatives as it relates to your overall credit rating, credit standing. And that's really all.
Drew wanted to pump Peacock Hills. Are you pretty certain that's the, the range of cost for?
Yeah, we, we asked our construction advisor to give us an estimate based on the design that we have right now, and that was their number. So I think, I mean, what we would do is, if you all want to progress that project, we would set that as the budget. And so when we hire a designer, that would be the budget. And so we'll design to that number.
So to that, my only just thought, if we budget to build it, how likely will somebody need to donate into this? And so if, if part of our thinking has been that we seek grants and other donations for the cause, I would almost want to see that effort borne out before we telegraph that we're going to pay for it.
I agree. Certainly. And when you, when you look at the CIP, we have revenues indicated coming to that project that are not bonds from private donations. So I mean, that's what we would telegraph. The thing is that you can't do is, you can't go out, well, I mean, you can, but I would not advise it, is enter into a contract for construction counting on private donations that we haven't received yet. Because then what happens if you don't get them? And so I want the council to be prepared before you decide to proceed with the project that that's the number and this is how we would pay for it if those private donations don't materialize.
But, but to that's point, wouldn't we go out and try to at least get a pledge or a letter of intent or something in advance?
We've already started that. I, I think there's a lot of interest in, in providing some funding from the private sector. Again, you got to be sure that you're going to be able to, to pay the contractor once you sign the contract. So you need to be prepared to fill the gap in case somebody makes a pledge and then doesn't honor it.
Put them in a dark seat.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Page 12, could you go to your?
We're not going to take questions at this moment, but I'll provide an opportunity to receive the meeting. All right, into the meeting.
All right. So where does the money go in this proposed budget? You can see the breakdown here. Not a tremendous amount of change in terms of how the money is being distributed. Of course, almost all of these sectors have grown based on expenses. There's not a tremendous amount of growth in discretionary spending though. Most of this, as you're going to see, is tied up in committed spending throughout each one of the sectors. So here you've got another breakdown of that. This is what the general fund looks like, so the total revenue coming in and then the expenses going out and where it goes. Obviously, the bulk of it goes to departmental expenses, and that's, of course, tied up in personnel, the largest expense the city has. So departmental spending, you can see how the, the budget has grown in each one of those sectors. And if you read this, education, public safety, public works, health, welfare, the general government, and community development, the theme is salaries, benefits, and contractual obligations, right? I mean, as, as costs of services have increased, so has buying the services in the case of contracts, and of course, personnel costs just continue to be exponential for everybody. It's interesting, as I talk to the other CAOs, our budget at this point is looking and feeling like a lot of budgets in the region. I think this is going to be a very different budget year for most of the localities.
And one thing, like you were talking about the, if you go back to slide right there, community development, you've got Juata, and we're mandated to provide a certain amount, a certain percentage of their budget.
Yeah, so I think this slide summarizes that pretty well. This shows you what's new in the budget. And what you'll see is, there's not a lot of discretionary stuff here. Now, the, the one thing that I would point out, of course, is we try to do some form of an increase for the staff. And so this budget does have a cost of living increase included. It does not have a merit. In most years, we try to do both, the cost of living and a merit, and this year, we just couldn't fit the merit component in. So it would be an across-the-board cost of living increase of 3%. What, what Ms. Ramsey is talking about is this partial list of what we're now calling membership agencies. We wrestled this year with what to call it, but we wanted to have some distinction between all of the other outside agencies, because these are agencies that we are members of a regional group and are bound by a contract in terms of what we pay. And so while one of us or several of us might serve on their boards, ultimately, it comes down to usage. Good example of that is the regional jail. More prisoners, daily population, chief's doing a fantastic job, but rest of the bad guys, we have to pay more, right? So this year, our number of average daily prisoners went up, so we're paying more for the privilege of being in that regional jail arrangement. Same thing with the Williamsburg Area Transit Authority, to be part of that regional group as they increase service or decide on other changes, those, those costs are passed on based on the funding formula. Again, the library is the same thing, and as you can see there, there's, there's a whole host of agencies that are participating in, that we really have very little control over how those costs change.
Some of them that you don't have up there, even like the CBH.
Yeah, it's, it's a long list of various agencies that cement us every year. Another one that's up, that's not up there is the state health department. And that's another one where, you know, CBH, the health department, both, we have even less say. I mean, theoretically, you could say, you know what, we're not going to be in the regional jail agreement anymore. That would be a terrible idea, but you could decide that. But the health department and CBH, the state statute requires you to pay whatever they decide you have to pay. And so even if you don't sign the contract which comes, you still have to pay. So there's a whole host of those types of agreements that we just can't alter. So what's not included, is a pretty decent list. I'm going to start with, at the top there, the budget reserve. As I said, while Davenport was giving their presentation, for years now, we have been preparing for what we have been establishing as projects that were on the vision, right? And that included some wishlist items. And so sort of like a savings account, we've been trying to put money away in the budget to accommodate what we thought the debt service would be for those projects. One example would be live performance venue. All right, we've been trying for the last two years to try and put money in the budget to accommodate what might be the eventual debt service. This budget does not. The budget is just too tight to get that in there. So while we're pretty excited that we could get the library and even Peacock Park built in, that live performance venue is just out of reach this year. And so that's a project that we want to continue to pursue on the schedule that you have previously talked about, and we need to talk about how we're going to provide the funding for it. We've also had this goal of continuing the separation from HUD and building in the money to provide to the housing authority to not need the HUD funding anymore. We may not have that luxury in fairly short order. It may be one of those things where we're just, again, required to fund it. And so we need to be thinking about how we're going to do that, but this budget does not move any money toward that goal either. These are the lists of things that the departments ask for. And what I want to point out, and I've been saying this now for a couple of years, is our budget has slowly been dealing with deficiencies in equipment and programming, right? For six years, we've been doing that, in the police department, the fire department in particular. And so what I want to point out is, despite this is a huge list of, we're not going to pay for it this year, there's not a lot of things on it. It's just personnel. And that indicates that we've dealt with the needs of the department, and now we need to be thinking about what the future needs are, right? And so the bad news is, this is a big list of personnel that are not funded. If you look just at the police department's need for six FTEs, I mean, that, that adds, what I, tell us what that adds to you?
Half a million?
No, I'm, I'm talking about in terms of function.
Oh, I'm sorry. So your minimum personnel goes from four at any one time in patrol to five. And so it should certainly be nice having that additional per, per shift around the clock, Sundays a week.
And there are certainly times when all of our on-duty staff are tied up, including the supervisor for the shift. Just based on however many calls that come in at the same time. And so that's something to be thinking about. But again, this budget doesn't accommodate that.
Four, including supervisors, is what you're saying.
And does that also include when we have all the special events and you have to draw front personnel for those as well?
Well, I mean, exactly. We keep that minimum at four, but we only have one pool of employees, so we need to see folks doing special events and being pulled off their normal assignment to be able to accommodate the special events.
Some special events pay for off-duty officers to come in and do overtime. Some special events, we pay overtime to augment the patrol staff. But yes, it's the same demand on a very small police force. So you can see there, a whole list of positions that are not included in this budget. Essentially, every position that was requested has not been funded. The unfunded outside agencies this year, we got a, a pretty decent collection of new outside agencies requesting funding that had not previously been funded in the budget. And the recommendation is to reject all of those requests. And then here are things that we don't yet have, because it's still early yet in the budgeting crisis. We don't have the health department number. The health department is actually among the latest. It's not uncommon for us to get their budget number at the end of the fiscal year that we've just paid for. So we, we may not know until next July what that number is going to be, having already paid. Oh, I'm sorry. So then the next one is, you know, what the joint activities budget will be from James City County. The actual schools request, you know, being part of a joint system has its downside. We do not have a lot of control over what that number is. And so we really won't know what our requirement is or what's being requested of us in both the operating and the capital side until James City County's board supervisors has decided what they're going to fund out of the super, former superintendent's recommended budget and the proposed school board budgets. But what we know is that the proposed school board budget includes, I think, 13 million on the operating side and then a whole host of increased costs on the capital side, not the least of which is a pre-K facility construction. So a lot to think about there. And then we don't have our health insurance rates. Sometimes Don's able to squeeze our insurance provider to get that number before today. This year, they've changed providers and we've got a new rep, and so we're not going to get it until, I think, the end of February. Fingers crossed that that comes in like it has in years past, at either zero or even one year, we had a decrease in the rate. So let's, let's really hope for that one. All right. So now we're going to move on to utility fund. And, you know, the utility fund, overall, the structure really hasn't changed much in terms of what we're proposing for the budget. We are going to talk a lot about capital in just a minute, but total revenues, total expenditures, not a lot of change there. The utility fund is interesting when you think about the city versus other cities, exceptionally low debt. Most utilities have a lot of debt because they've done a tremendous amount of capital improvements over time, and we just haven't. And so we're going to spend some time today talking about what we need to do on the capital side. So this shows you what the departmental spending looks like. Again, it, it's, it's not a, a big number. This is a relatively small utility and operated exceptionally well over the years. Here's the regional utility rate comparison. And as you can see, like all of the other rates that we have, we're at $73. The lowest in the region is Franklin, and that's a little bit misleading because of the services that they provide. It's not apples to apples in terms of what we do. But you can see there, there's a tremendous difference in terms of what the services that are being provided and the cost for it.
So just a second clarification there. The HRSD for us.
Yeah, so it's, it's a little bit interesting because what we do, unlike I think just about everybody else, is A, we do quarterly billing, and B, in that quarterly bill is included the HRSD rate, which is not us, right? So our utility does not treat sewage. We don't have a sewage treatment plant. We send the sewage, we collect the sewage, and then we send that sewage to HRSD and they treat it. And they set the rate for that, not us. So we blend that into the bill. The customer doesn't get two bills. Just about all these other localities, if you lived there, you would get two separate bills. You'd get a water bill from the local utility, and then you'd get an HRSD bill for your sewer usage, which is based on what you spent on water.
And that's the reason we don't have the white line in there.
That's right. That's right. So here is the capital needs. You know, we're still working on the master plan, that this is the early look at it, what Jack thinks is needed to be done. We need to make a pretty significant investment in the water treatment plant, 9.2 million. We need to work on our distribution system over two phases, a 3.5 investment and then another $9 million. And then we need to do some stuff on the sewer side as well for 5.8. Now, that's a total of $27 million. It's a big scary number. Obviously, what we're proposing is not to do this all at once. We, A, don't have the staff to do it. Even if we hired contractors, we don't have the staff to supervise the work. And so this is going to be done gradually over time. This is a 10-year at least work program, and we've worked with Davenport to figure out how we could borrow the money to do just that. And so we're going to ask Davenport to come back up and talk about utility bond.
So good morning, again, Jimmy Sanderson with Davenport and Company. Great to meet you. David got to talk about the good stuff, I got to talk about water sewer. So, but we've had a lot of conversations, very well thought out, and want to give you some of the thoughts that we had. What we wanted to look at in particular was to put together a pro forma that allows us to see what, what are utility funds going to look like going forward. In particular, as that relates to your debt ratios, we're going to look at a couple of things. We're going to look at what's called debt service coverage ratio, basically how much your revenues cover your expenses and what you have left over to pay for debt at the end of the day. But also days cash on hand, sort of goes to the fund balance concept on the general fund. Similarly, in utilities, you want to have some cash and reserves set up as well. One of the things we, we.
Just to clarify, we have a separate utility fund that utility payments go to, and then we pay expenses from it. It's independent of our, our general fund.
It's one of the six funds the city has, and its distinction is, it's an enterprise fund. It's designed to support itself through its own revenues.
Right. And that's what we want to make sure continues to happen. One of the things we make here is avoid the subsidy from the general fund to the utilities. And sometimes with new utility systems, there is, there is a subsidy from the general fund to that utility fund, but we want to try to avoid that if we can.
And within the utility fund, there's a reserve fund.
That's, that's correct. That's right. And we're going to show you what that is in, in a minute. And it's separate from what David was describing earlier, as we, as the unassigned fund balance in your general fund. We're going to talk about best pack, best practices, and then we're also going to talk about future rate, rate increases as well. One of the things we're going to look at is to obviously try to mitigate those, those impacts as well, but, but making sure we're covering the capital projects that Drew mentioned a minute ago. So just a little bit of history, this fund has operated very well. And a couple of things we're going to look at, again, we talked about debt service coverage ratio, again, how much money you have left over at the end of the day to pay your debt service. We've got total revenues up here, operating expenses. Your debt service is, is pretty low, call it $500,000 now. Your surplus has been, been material. And so your, your coverages have been up and down, but one and a half times coverage to as high as four times coverage, very strong in, in the utility world. And as you layer in those new capital projects, though, it, it becomes more and more of a struggle, and you've got to try to plan that out. The user rates, one of the things that we noted in particular, we have control over the water side of our, of our rates, not, not this, not the sewer side. And you're going to see when we do the pro forma, this is the control that the lever that the city, city council has in particular. But one of the things we noted too was that there hadn't been really any, any increases in that water rate over a long period of time. And, and so that, that causes a couple of things. One, it's, it's, it's a maintaining of a, of a low rate for your users, but it's also not building up reserves, and it's also not planning for the future for those increased costs that you have that, again, Drew. It's also not planning for the future for those increased costs that you have that, again, Drew mentioned. Cash and cash equivalents, this is similar to that fund balance that David was mentioning on the general fund side. Very strong, and you'll see a drop here. And this isn't a real drop in money, but this is money that has been programmed for another use. And so we wanted to start with sort of what's the available money? That's the 5.6 million out of your total cash and cash equivalents. And here's where we convert it to day's cash on hand. And we're going to talk about sort of best practices for that number too going forward. But it had been a very strong day's cash on hand number, well in excess of 500 times, or 500 days' cash on hand. That's basically saying, if I didn't get any more revenue in the system, how long could I operate with just the reserves that I have on hand? Debt profile, again, very, very low for a utility. You've got to pay cash for projects, and I suspect there's some projects that just haven't been ready yet, and now they are. But your debt service goes away in 2029, FY 2029. And right now, it's at 500,000 and drops down there to just under 200,000 out in 2028. So this is a good thing because it gives us the ability to layer in some new debt associated with those capital projects that you have. Here are some of our recommendations when we look at a new utility system that we think are important for you as the council members understand and keep an eye on. The same thing as the debt service expenditures and the debt to assess value that we had on the general fund side. We tend to borrow for a longer period of time in utility funds. They're long-lived assets, and so it's not uncommon to borrow for 30 even 40 years in the utility fund side. Day's cash on hand policy, we'd like to see a 200 days' cash on hand. So you'll see in the pro forma that we're projecting out and we're looking to see where that number is and trying to stay above that. Debt service coverage ratio, we'd like to see that above 1.25. When lenders come and look at a system, if we were to set this up as a separate utility fund, not a general obligation pledge of the city, but a separate, just a revenue pledge, that 1.25 coverage number gives them some comfort that if revenues go down a little bit or expenses go up a little bit, you still have enough revenue every year to pay your debt service and help a little bit up there. One of the other things we look at is your total debt service as a percentage of your system revenue. Again, in the utility system, that can be a higher number than we would see in the general fund side. 40% is the number we like to see, that below that number. The last thing is sort of a multi-year user rate implementation. So it's, in our view, having those rate increases on an annual basis, one, makes them smaller than waiting to do them over a longer period of time. And then also gives you some flexibility in the future to lower them or move them up or down as you need to. So the CIP, so Drew showed the total numbers that we needed. We've looked at this with your staff and laid it out going forward, about 10 years. And so what we've done is we've just programmed in two bond issues, I'm sorry, one bond issue every two years going out through 2034. And again, so these are the sides, that's the limit a little bit, our borrowing upfront. Let's try to space that out a little bit and layer that debt service as it comes in. Again, this can change as we look at the projects and actually be able to accomplish them. This may move. And one of the things we talked with staff about, and we would suggest, is this is something we should look at every year. Come back, see what we've gotten done, what we haven't gotten done, and what your pro forma would look like based on any changes. So borrowing assumption that we've used here, again, assume that 27 million of total utility capital projects. We've assumed a 30-year borrowing at 5% interest. Again, that's higher than obviously the market is, but we're assuming this over the whole 10-year period. So that's a conservative number. Level debt service. And then we have assumed some interest-only period as well to get us through when our debt service drops down, get time for the project actually to be built, and then we start layering in the principal. So here's what that would look like. Again, we start out very low where our current debt service is, that's it here in the dark green. Then as we're layering that in, you'll see the debt service go up, and it peaks out at just shy of 1.8 million. Again, that's at that higher 5% interest rate. I guess I should also mention, there are opportunities in Virginia to get grants from the state and the federal government and lower interest rates. That's certainly something that Jack is going to look to, and will help him look at that as well, but only help these numbers going forward. So we put together our pro forma and just some assumptions that we've made here. And again, these are things that can change on an annual basis. I don't think we need to go through all of them, but a couple of things to think about. The sewer revenues, which we can't control, we've assumed a 3% growth there. The tap fee availability fees, we've sort of pegged numbers for those, non-operating revenues. The operating expenses, though, we've grown 7%. So it's a pretty big number, but that's been consistent with your historical expenses in the system. They have gone up and down over time, but that average growth has been about 7%. And then again, the debt service, we assumed three years' interest only and then a 30-year amortization. So our initial results, this case one, we did, we just said, hey, we're going to match the water revenue growth, again, what you can control, at 7% to match the expense growth that we have as well. And again, the average increase, 7% over 10 years, the same, a total of 40% increase in the first five years. And does that meet our day's cash on hand policy of 200 days? No, it doesn't. You'll see that in more detail here. It doesn't meet our debt service coverage ratio either. And so again, the control that you have is on the water rate, that's the 7% all the way out through 35. And you can see again that our days' cash on hand go negative in 2031, and our debt service coverage numbers go below one times coverage in 2028 as well. So that just basically tells us, assuming these expense growth rates and assuming these capital projects that we need to have, we need to do something in excess of a 7% annual growth rate in the utility fund. So we're working with staff, we came up with some other ideas to look at that. This is our scenario two. This has a varying increase in your water rate over time. Average about 12% over 10 years. It's approximately 90% increase in your water rate over the first five years. This meets both our day's cash on hand and our coverage policies. Again, you would have to adopt those policies, but those are our suggested policies. And here's what the pro forma looks like. Again, we've assumed a 30% increase in your water rate. Those other assumptions remain the same, again, related to sewer in particular. Still have that 7% growth rate in expenses. But you can see that our day's cash on hand stays above our 200 days' cash on hand level, and our coverage number stays well above that one point, 1.5 times. We're ranging from two times coverage at low point in 2029, and then it starts to move up until 2035 where it goes back down to 2.24. One of the things that we'll note is as our cash and cash equivalents grows, you would have the opportunity in the future to supplement the borrowing plan with cash too. So there could be a combination of debt and cash payments for projects. We've assumed, I think, $300,000 a year of cash capital projects in our pro forma, but you could do more than that. And again, that would reduce your day's cash on hand, and it would also improve your debt service coverage because you'd be borrowing less. Now, these future rate increases, again, these are just assumptions that we're making today. And as we look at the plan and the projects take place or don't take place or are pushed back, you could revisit what those might be in any given year, right? And so if the projects were to go materially higher, those could go up. But if they're slower and they come in at lesser costs, but more likely if they were slower, those rate increases, obviously, you would adjust those on an annual basis. Can we stop there, Mr. Mayor, and answer any questions that you have? I want to go a little bit further, but I want to stop there as far as the pro forma is. We're going to show you in a minute what that looks like in terms of rates.
Just so clear, because the way this is funded, it has no impact on the city's credit rating.
So if we were to do and set this up and be able to demonstrate to the rating agencies that we have these coverages and these reserves, you could set up a separate fund that's paid only from the utility revenues. It would be a pledge of those utility revenues and would not be a general obligation pledge. Now, some of the rating agencies will take that into account, but it's not a one-for-one, the same as issuing a G O bond, because there is a source of revenues to pay. So we took this to what is the impact on the individual users? Again, that's a high percentage increase. But given where you stack up as far as your rates compared to your surrounding jurisdictions, on a dollar amount, it's not quite as bad. So again, for the average user, a 30% increase in the water rate, it adds $6 to $7 per month to their bill. For a low-end user, 30% increase translates to $3 to $4. The average business, which is a much larger user of water, would translate to an additional $100 per month on their tax.
And that's just on the water supply.
Just on the water piece, that's correct. Drew? Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions for Jimmy?
Just an observation, I guess when we look at the rates staying the same for so many years, we weren't able to build up some reserves and take care of capital projects over the past number of years. And from what I've heard too, overall usage has either stabilized or in some cases gone down. So it puts us in this spot.
Yeah, and I'll say, I mean, your more mature utility systems have annual increases. I mean, you're seeing your expenses go up 7% a year. And if you're not increasing your rate or you're not having growth, then it's difficult to meet those growths on both sides. And so you're starting to spend down your reserves, and you probably can't take on some capital projects. And so again, it ultimately comes to a larger percentage increase that you have to have at the end of the day. And so we've just found it's easier to do those yearly increases at a smaller tick than you may need to if you just wait 10 years and do one.
Any sense on what, obviously, we know HRSD rates are not going to stay the same, what that does to, what that adds to a user's bill? We're used to seeing HRSD and water together, so HRSD is going to increase, I'm sure.
I don't have this average.
But the
1%.
That's, we see the HRSD is included in the sewer side of the bill. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thanks.
Thank you. So we went a little step further to show you what does this actually mean to our users. We just looked at some of our data. So a low-end residential user, a mid-range residential user, and then a high-end residential user. This is me, in case you're wondering. I don't know how this is me. I have relatively small eyes. But, and then this is the commercial rate. Now, the thing about the commercial rate is it includes major users like William Mary Klein and Williamsburg. And so that number is kind of inflated because of their demand. But that's included, their usage is included in that. So it would actually be for the typical commercial user, probably a little less than $100. But that's just so you can see the outside of the rates. Now, a couple of things that we have been working towards to prepare for what we've been telling you now for years was coming, a recommendation to raise utility rate, is the ability to go to monthly billing instead of a quarterly bill. So that will help a lot, I think, as people can adjust to what is a much more standard utility billing cycle, as well as the ability to separate out that HRSD bill from the city's bill. So that's something that we would like to do at the same time that we do these rate increases. And we're prepared to do that on July the 1st, I think, in terms of making that switch shortly thereafter. So for most people, I think they would, they would think that the bill hasn't really gone up that much as Davenport's slideshow and our slideshow, the increase is pretty minimal on a monthly basis.
Good question, is this the rate with it already being separated out?
Jack?
This is just the water. That's just water, that's not interest.
So, you know, as the mayor said, HRSD controls our home rates, we can't control that. I think Jimmy said it, most utilities have a yearly rate increase. If it's just known, that's what's going to happen, is they try to accommodate for increasing costs. We've been fairly fortunate. Now, this is not the only way to accomplish what needs to be done. We've looked at different scenarios. Originally, Jack and I were looking at, what if we just raised the rate one time to what we needed it to be and then pay-go these expenses? And we thought that was a fairly reasonable plan despite that initial pain of having a pretty substantial rate increase. But after meeting with Davenport and talking through that option versus this option, this actually makes more sense because we can scale it as we need. As we said, it's a 10-year plan, Davenport's outlaid basically borrowing every two years. But if we don't keep up with that, or as we make improvements, we decide, you know what? That treatment we thought we needed, we don't need, but we need to do this instead. We can adjust as we go as opposed to raising it all now, doing a big borrow, and then being sort of locked into what that plan was.
So, you know, it occurs to me that, you know, when you look at that and you go, wow, $27 million of needed infrastructure repair is a lot. That's not something, I mean, this is not new information. I think, you know, from my perspective on council, certainly over the last few years, you know, we have looked at no rate increase, and that's been a priority for councils, is not raise the rate because we didn't want to impact our residents. But in doing that, we've also deferred future maintenance. And we've been able to defer that maintenance because I believe we have a great public works department that maintains the facilities for the last 50 years in very good order. And I've had the opportunity to tour the treatment plant, and while it's dated, I mean, it's pretty amazing to see how well it's maintained. That doesn't last forever. So today, you know, the desire not to raise rates on our residents and businesses and deferring that maintenance has caught us to a point where we have to make a decision on how to move forward. So I like a couple of things in this. I like being able to, if we're looking at that $28 million, spreading that over three different tranches, allowing us the opportunity to evaluate where we are at any given time and then needs moving forward, whether we can then, you know, if there's extra cash in the utility fund to pay as we go, we can utilize that opportunity rather than just borrowing it all today. So being able to spread that out in a managed way, understanding the needs, I think, makes sense. I think separating out the HRSD, I think that's, you know, I think, you know, adding another bill to our taxpayers is not a favorable thing. Nobody wants to get an extra piece of mail and, you know, or set up another account to pay a bill. But doing that allows that to be separate from what it is that we actually, from the services that we are actually delivering. And so that, when you take out that HRSD and you look at the total expense that our consumers pay, our residents pay, it's even greater deficiency compared to everybody else. And so, and I think that's important when you think about where we are in our rate structure. Not that I'm looking, I wouldn't want to suggest that we're hiding that increase, but I think it makes that rate increase more justifiable or easy to understand from the consumer's perspective. So I think we should separate that out. And then we're looking at a true utility that the city is delivering, and that's what we're building for. And then setting up a program or schedule, rather, of rate increases to meet future needs and allowing councils the opportunity, future councils the opportunity to make whatever adjustments they need based on, you know, the concept of three tranches of borrowing, I think is a strategic way to move forward that creates the less impact on our residents.
It's interesting, I've always had a separate HRSD bill.
Some people do.
So, you know, my quarterly, I fall into the low category. So my, you know, current water bill's like $32 a month, a quarter, so.
One of my neighbors always says, Drew, you're spending more money to send me the bill than the bill actually is.
And I think there's
I was always telling him he could pay more.
I actually think to the mayor's point, and like certainly not hiding anything, I think actually separating out makes it far more transparent.
Yes.
I think it's transparency, like actually it's a safe, like here's what we can control, here's what we're doing, and here was what we're doing with it. Like, this isn't fun. Like, I don't really want to, you know, nobody wants to, you know, raise rates. But at the end of the day, if you look at the history and you look at where we are, in both metaphorical and literally, the bill has come due in terms of, you know, doing what needs to be done and then realizing that we have to, we have to make, we have to plan for it. And so I just wondered though- And so I just wondered though, Drew, for just refresher, because it has been talked about, but in that large number of projects, just what type, what are, like a broad brush? You know, like what are the projects? And then something that I actually have top of mind, to be honest, is what we just saw happen in Richmond. Like, I want to make sure that, like, nothing like that, you know, happens here.
Sure. And Jack can talk more intelligently about all this, but I'll lead in and turn it over to Jack. To what the mayor was saying, we have an unbelievable staff globally. Public Works is no exception. The folks that work in water treatment and in the utilities, basically production versus distribution, are amazing public servants dedicated to what they do with real talent, skills, and certifications back to them, right? Let's start there. And because of that, we're able to operate a very old utility system as if it were state-of-the-art. And we're able to earn the highest awards that we can for water quality. We're able to meet needs day in, day out, and respond to those issues. But what we've seen recently is the equipment that we're using has just reached the end of its life. And yes, it's working, right? I mean, but at some point, it's not going to. And that's essentially what happened in Richmond, right? They ignored this, they put it off, put it off, put it off. Then they had an event that was beyond their control, that triggered a series of failures. It was largely due to a little bit of operator error, but also equipment failure, because it was old and had not been serviced in a long, long time. You can go exponentially beyond that and look at the other, the other localities that used Richmond's water. One was able to turn off the flow and stop contamination and continue to provide water to their community. The other one, when they went to turn off the water, the valve didn't work. Now, that's an oversimplification, but that's what happened. So then, one little anecdote about us, it's very similar to that. It's not that long ago, we discovered, Jack actually personally discovered a leak. And he ordered the guys to get in there and fix that. So that required them to turn off, I want to say five valves, I probably got that wrong. So they go to turn off the valves, none of them worked. So now, not only are we trying to fix the leak, but we've got to bypass those valves completely, replace the valves, just to fix the original problem. That's an illustration of, yes, it's working, but someday it may not. And the consequences of someday it may not are segments of the population not having water, having to boil water, and none of us want that. And so this is a preemptive strike to modernize and fix all of that in a time where we think we can. Now, that makes it sound like this is something that we have not really addressed. But I was just standing here thinking about, I came to the city in 2016, and every budget retreat since 2016, the city manager or I have stood up here and said, we're going to have to raise utility rates to deal with capital improvements. And so this is not new, we've just put it off as long as is reasonable. Jack, do you want to add anything?
Go over it pretty well. Sometimes I don't know when to stop.
But the other thing, Drew, is over, particularly over the past year, I think you, policies have been established so that when this rate increase came, that it would make it as easy on the consumer as possible.
Yeah, one of the things, I mean, I was really, I probably would have told you three years ago to do this. I really, I mean, I told Barbara, I said, three years ago, I said, this is the moment, we need to ask for utility rate increase. And I didn't do it, because I really felt like the smart thing for our residents, and the impact that it would be, including me, is to go to monthly billing. And that meant taking the time to install the infrastructure that would allow us to do that. Jack met the goal that I set by having Paul and his crew replace meters all over the city, including mine, so that we can now go to monthly billing. And so we've made those steps to make it as easy on the residents as it can be. And I'm not trying to hide that it's a rate increase. Of course it's a rate increase, but it's far easier to pay that rate increase monthly than it is quarterly, as a guy who gets this tier of quarterly bill.
And particularly since it's so easy to have it set up to be taken from your bank account, too.
That's right. I might actually enroll in auto.
Yeah, so three years ago, I was engaged in that conversation. But we were also, as a council and community, engaged in conversation whether we should raise taxes or not, and so.
We've tried to balance it. Come back from COVID.
Right.
We're certainly trying to balance what the needs are going to be, so that it's not an overwhelming increase at one time.
And just for the record, my commercial bill's much higher than that at the last, I mean, it's thousands, so.
Well, when you look at, I mean, you're not talking about some short-end investments. You compare it to a police station or a fire station, you're talking about a 40- or 50-year investment. You build a new pump station, it's a 40-, 50-year investment that...
Well, actually, Jack, again, tell me if I'm wrong, but we believe that much of what we would do in this plan would never have to be done again, as long as we keep up with the maintenance of those things, right? I mean, you've got to remember that we inherited this system, we didn't install it. So much of what we have was not a decision that the city made, it was a decision someone else made about what they were going to do, right? And so we've got pump stations that are not necessarily our design. Did we keep up with the maintenance the way that we should have? Probably not. And so now we're going to replace them. But with this plan in place, we'll be able to keep up with that maintenance, and we probably never have to replace them again. Now, the one caveat to that is sizing them, right? If something happens that you need a bigger pump than what you have, that's a different ballgame. But we won't have to replace them because of age or failure. Is that right? Okay. So next is the tourism fund. Not a lot of change here, obviously. This is the fund that was set up to collect most of the tourism dollars in an effort to be transparent, but also make it easier for us to administer the money that comes in. Now, much of this is actually mandated by the state statutes for tourism in Denver. So we're not going to spend a whole lot of time on this in terms of what's happening. Not a lot of change. You know, this fund really acts as the tourism grant depository, and much of that money now is accounted for based on previous grant awards out. So this is a place where we take money in, and then we send it where it needs to go. I wanted to just mention this, and I couldn't really decide where to put it in the PowerPoint, so I decided to put it here, because this is a task I've actually given to Yuri. If you think about how we handle outside agency requests, and there are a lot of them, we basically have two places that they go now. We have social services advisory board, and then we have tourism, right? And then, but there's a whole lot of outside agency requests that are not really either one of those, especially as we start to get more new applications. And so this year, we dipped our toe in the water. I asked Yuri to lead an effort to review a lot of those applications. And I just want to point out, unbelievable job, because in her review, you saved us $15,000 in one application as you, as you... $30,000, as she investigated the application and realized they had actually calculated their own formula wrong. So that's an example of why this process is important, right? So what we decided to do is ask Yuri to lead a new staff committee review process for outside agencies. These are the ones that fall in between social service advisory and tourism. So what she'll do is she'll form a staff group that will review these, as they come in. There'll be a staff recommendation for funding. We'll ask the city council to appoint two liaisons to that group. They will meet early and review those recommendations, and then that will become the recommendation in the city's budget. I think what that does is it actually takes the pressure off of Barbara and I, who are just looking at these requests and deciding, yes, no, yes, no. This puts a lot more eyes on it, and as we illustrated, having more eyes on it means catching when somebody has made a mistake. So this is, I think, going to improve our process, but also give you a lot more information in terms of evaluating, particularly the new applications that come in, and why they're asking for the city's money and what they intend to do with it.
So will there be like a third category? We've got the SSAB, we've got the tourism ones, and then everything else will be clumped together now?
And that, the goal is that every outside agency, even in Drew's opinion, the membership organizations will go through a process, so that there's eyes on what's being looked at. Because even the membership-driven organizations could have calculated the funding formula wrong, right? I mean, for example, and this is something that all of us know, Carolyn knows it well, of course, is when you ask somebody where they live, the answer is Williamsburg, whether they live in Williamsburg or Toanac, right? And so in the funding formulas for these agencies, including the memberships, it's very possible for them to incorrectly assign a person who's using their services to the city of Williamsburg, when they're really James City County, Ural County. And so having somebody that can look at those addresses or work with our GIS department to make sure is more and more important these days. So let's talk about the capital improvement project fund, and this is the other sort of critical theme of the message today. Total revenues in, $39 million, total revenues out, $39 million. As you can see here, the vast majority of our capital projects are, of course, public works. And so, not a lot of change there. What's included in the CIP, I just took some of them. Obviously, the CIP is a humongous spreadsheet that we could spend all afternoon going through. It's in the proposed budget, and you can look at it to your heart's content and talk about the various projects that reflect the GIOs, but also all the other projects that are ongoing, including fiat, assigned stuff. But here are the highlights. Police station, of course, is included, the library is included, two fire trucks and an ambulance are accommodated. Police take-home vehicle plan continued to be implemented, public works guard renovation, and a municipal building spacing. Now, these last two, we have borrowed the money for, as Davenport illustrated, but we've not spent the money. We're still working through, what would that be? What does it need to be? And should we actually do it, is a question. So ultimately, those are still projects that will come back to you for approval, just like the library. Even though we're trying to accommodate it, if you decide not to do it, then it just comes out of the plan. So the fact that it's included in the plan is not assuming that these will be approved for expenditure. This is critical. I guess I'm too repetitive, but one of the things that we have said for years is that there was a structural imbalance in the city's budget, and it was in the funding of the CIP. As projects were added to the CIP, revenue equivalent was not added. And we consistently, year over year, have found ways to make the CIP balanced, but it has not been to the benefit of the plan. And eventually, those strategies are going to dry up. And so one of the things that we did is, you know, if we go back to '22, I recommended an eight-cent tax increase to address this problem. And the council approved a four-cent tax increase, and then rolled two cents back. So we didn't accomplish the goal there. But what we did do is then we moved a large sum of money from what we had received from ARPA into the capital plan, that we would keep there as a stabilization fund, right? And so what we've done every year is, as we've budgeted CIP, we take the revenues that are available, and we make up the difference from that stabilization fund, which basically just prolonged when we needed to address this. And so every year, we forecasted when that stabilization fund would be exhausted. In '24, we said it was '28, and now in '25, we're saying it's '27, and in reality, it's going to be '26, if the plan is approved as proposed. And so that is a critical issue that's going to have to be addressed. So that all factors in to my recommendation for a tax rate. I am, right now, proposing a budget that's balanced, both on the CIP side and in the operating side. Now, what's important about that is the caveats that I mentioned that are still not included, because it's balanced, but very thin margins, okay? So health insurance increases and education cost increases could be the difference maker. So we're still a long way away from the finish line here. If I had a Magic 8-Ball up on the screen, it would say "Too Soon to Tell", for those of you that remember shaking the ball. But my recommendation right now is that tax rate not change, at least not based on the budget that I have proposed. Education costs get approved by James City County, and we're looking at an exponential increase in the CIP. Maybe even exponential increases in the operating side could completely change this recommendation. Because if those numbers are big enough, it would be exceptionally difficult for me to find savings to accommodate that. To illustrate that point, I want to talk about some things that we've already done. So this just shows you what I was just saying. Balanced in the CIP of the city's projects, the costs that we can control, not balanced with the costs that we can't control. So this is just sort of a summary of what we are looking at, concerned about, worried about in terms of the city's fiscal health. And I would say there are two major factors. Number one, on the general fund side, on the operating side, the expenses are catching up to even surpassing revenues that are available, right? I mean, the margins I showed you, exceptionally thin for FY '25. So one of the things that I have done is already, effective yesterday, implemented a vacancy hold for all vacant positions. That means that if a position was vacant yesterday, it'll be vacant tomorrow. And that's to save money in the operating side, not only next fiscal year, but this fiscal year. And we will continue that hold until Barbara and I feel like there's enough capacity there, leeway between revenues and expenses, that we can begin to fill those positions. Now, in full transparency, all we're really looking at is a number value, right? I don't really care that this particular position is vacant. So if a department head comes to me with a plan on how they can fill this position that's more critical than that position, and the money is the same, of course I'm going to approve that. Individual promotions that the money matches out, fine, right? So it's not, you're not going to be able to audit that we're, this position was vacant when he said it, and now it's filled, something's not right. It's all about the math. And Barbara and I will meet constantly to talk about where the math is in terms of revenues versus expenses. And as that gap gets bigger and bigger, this control will get less and less important. That's the goal, right? So we're just going to be keeping a very close eye on expenses as we move through the rest of this fiscal year and into next fiscal year. The other thing that I want to point out, that I think illustrates how tight this budget is, is that the CIP that we're presenting today is $30 million less than it was when it was first constructed. Now, that's $30 million of both new projects that weren't in it last year, that we said no to, but also a whole host of projects that have been in the plan that I took out, because we just can't afford them. That's how we balance it, okay? So it's very important that we understand, this is a very different financial environment than we've been in. The reason that's important is, can I balance the budget? Of course, I can balance the budget. If you tell me that we're not raising rates, period, end of story, I'm going to balance the budget. That's what I have to do. Eventually, we're going to get to the point where I'm looking at program budgets and I'm looking at staff, right? Eventually, we're going to get there, and it won't take long, based on the numbers that we're seeing. The most important thing, though, is we cannot, Drew's opinion, my strong recommendation to you, Barbara certainly agrees, we cannot fall into the trap of balancing the budget based on fund balance. All that does is compound the problem, right? So illustration of that, the CIP need, I told you back in whatever year it was, it was eight cents. If we were trying to fix that problem today, it's going to be more than eight cents, because we compounded over time that issue. We filled the gap with one-time revenues, and once they're depleted, we've not recovered that growth in what was required. And so as we begin to deal with this, it's probably going to cost us more than it would have if we had just dealt with it then. So, all that is to say, we're presenting a balanced budget today. I don't know that it'll be balanced tomorrow. It's all a factor of these last few costs that are just not, we don't have them yet. Once we have them, then Barbara and I will begin to look at, what can we do next, right? Obviously, our goal is not to raise the rate. And if we can find a way to do that, that's what we'll propose. Nobody wants to raise the rate. It's not fun for us to do it, it's not fun for the community, I pay the taxes, I don't want to have to pay more taxes. So it's not a goal to raise the rates. But in some circumstances, it may be an S.
Because without raising the rate, we have no cushion at all. And those extra fees and costs that we don't know now, we might not know until May?
Well, we won't know certainly until March. Like, I mean, I talked to Mr. Stevens earlier this week, and he's working on his budget, but I don't think he's going to know from his board what they're going to accept from the schools until closer to him publishing a budget. And even then, he may publish a budget that then the board rejects. So you're right, we may not know until very close to May what our obligations are going to be regarding the schools. Now, of course, we're in constant contact with them and communicating what needs exist. And I think for the most part, we agree as we look at the budget, but it's still very much up in the air. The other thing that I would point out is, you know, trying to do everything that we can. We used to stand in front of you at the budget retreat and all through the budget process and talk about how we are very conservative in our revenue estimates. You all remember us saying that. And you've noticed, we don't say that anymore, because you asked us to be more aggressive. And for several years, you said, be more aggressive, be more... Well, we've reached a point where we're not only aggressive, we're opportunistic. And so that's why, when we look at FY '25's forecast for how we're going to end the year, revenues are about exactly what we thought they would be. So there's not a lot of margin. And when Barbara first sent... And when Barbara first sent me the budget and it was way out of balance, I, of course, sat down and looked at the revenues. I went back and looked at finance reports. I compared month over month, trying to find any little number that I thought maybe I could inch up and eventually admitted defeat and said, "Nope, you've done a good job here, Barbara. I can't ask you to do anymore." So, you know, this is just a, this is a fact of where we are. I think that Nikki's presentation verifies all of that for us. And I think what's most scary to me about being in this position is the uncertainty what the federal government might do. And this is not a political commentary, it's a reality. There will be pressure on the administration to deal with inflation. Drew's opinion is they will do something. I have no idea what that something will be, and I don't know what the impact of that something will be. As Nikki said, the main tool to deal with inflation is to raise interest rates. And if that happens, we're going to see more impact on real estate values in the city in the wrong direction in terms of revenue. And so we just need to be mindful, there are a lot of dynamic factors happening, and we need to be prepared to react to them. The advantage that we have is the strong fund balance. And that's why we've worked hard to get it to where it is. Now, I want to point out that on paper, it's 52%. That includes $2 million that technically is for school CIP needs. So just remember that, $2 million needs to be transferred out. It's still a very high fund balance, but I just don't want to mislead you in thinking it's higher than it is. Yes, that's where it's parked, and yes, that's the calculation. You could decide not to do that, but the intent is if the school system needs that, it would go there. And based on what we're looking at in the CIP, it very likely will be needed if we decide to fund their capital plan.
And we have a policy for our reserve balance anyway.
Yes, the reserve, the reserve policy is 35%, which is higher than most localities maintain anyway. And then we have worked very hard to exceed that to prepare for circumstances like this, right? One-time expenses and things like that. But like any savings account, takes forever to put it in and a blink of an eye to spend it. And so while it's so tempting in local government to only worry about this year's problem, please do not do that.
So Drew, thank you for the presentation, all the wonderful information sarcastic. So, you know, it is a difficult time and not, this conversation, not unlike the utility conversation. You know, we're coming to a point, and one of your first graphs was, you know, the fiscal health of Williamsburg's forecast where our expenses are meeting our revenues. I think back from our early days on council, we always would try to budget for, you know, a million dollars or more in budget surplus, which we then direct towards our CIP. Those are different days. So I applaud the efforts and consideration of hiring freezes. There's some new work that Elon Musk is doing with the outside agencies. You know, finding ways that we can cut expenses. Have you begun or will you begin an effort to look at within the departments? And this is not an indictment that we're overspending. But have you looked at ways to make some adjustments within the different departments? And I think about healthcare, and this goes back to a conversation that I had with another organization that I worked with. Look at healthcare, healthcare costs are expensive. You know, have we looked at what the plan is, what our deductibles are, you know? And I don't know the answer to these questions, but for example, you know, do we have a policy where if somebody's employed with the city and William, and their spouses at William &amp; Mary, that they can, the employee of the city could be on spouse's plan versus coming to our plan? You know, assuming it doesn't cost the employee more, can, have we looked at, a young, healthy person on our plan may not need, you know, a $500 deductible. Maybe there's a $1,000 deductible. And there may be a way that we can supplement that, you know, if there is an occurrence with that young person, that we may be able to help them with that additional deductible cost in a different manner. But that would lower the insurance bill. We started that type of investigation on throughout the city's departments.
Yes, we look at that every year. We have adjusted all kinds of benefits. But if you go back to COVID, and the CAOs and I were talking about this the other day and budgets in that regard, was during COVID, so many localities were at half-staff in so many critical departments, fire, police, public works. Everyone worked hard to fix benefits and salaries to fix that problem. And so part of the reason that our expenses now look like they do is because we are probably the best staff we've been in a very long time in terms of vacancies. And that's because we fixed those deficiencies. We wouldn't want to go backwards. But we certainly have looked at how can we save money, not just for the city, but for the employees. Yes, of course, if you've got the opportunity to go to your spouse's plan, you can. We don't require it. There are some places that require it, but we don't require it. We pay a high percentage of the employees' rate and have an excellent health insurance benefit, far better than a lot of the folks in the region that have self-insured or private provider plans. We're part of the state plan. So we actually benefit because our rate is part of a statewide pool. And so it's not just based on our experience, I think is what's really helping us in terms of the rate. So yes, absolutely, we look at all that.
And there's an indirect cost to, I mean, by providing that, we, you know, we were able to help retain some of the best employees that we have. And so I don't, I'm not, when I raise that question, I'm not diminishing the value of some of those things. I think the general question is, are we digging in to find efficiencies within all the different layers of government and, you know, expenses?
I think so. As this budget becomes more finalized, we will actually have to do more of that.
Got any questions?
It's a lot to absorb.
Well, I think, I think one thing is, Drew has said we've come a long way in the past number of years to stabilize, which was a word that Nikki used a lot. We've, we've done that to stabilize our labor force, our benefits, our programming, and all of the things that we've worked hard to catch up on, whether it be the police station, the fire station. And it's like, how can we sort of keep stabilized and try to go forward a little bit without going backwards? And because in my view, if we go backwards by cutting too much and, you know, doing the fire this and fire that, then it'll be that much harder to catch back up again. Just what we've seen in the utilities, you know, by putting that off, it's a much bigger step forward now than if it had been a little more gradual. Just my opinion.
And so, you know, so it comes down to priorities. So city managers, you know, has presented certain measures to cut, you know, defer CIP items to save expenses to match our current projected revenues. We could grow our revenues through rate increases to help, you know, provide more revenue so that we can move forward to some of the CIP things that he recommended. That may be a desired outcome because I think to your point, if we defer doing certain things, we'd lose momentum on some of the strategies that we've been implementing over the last number of years.
And they're only going to cost more down the road.
Sure.
Or if we defer them, you know, to create a little bit of cushion for those uncertainties also. I think there's a lot of questions as to what's going to happen in the next week.
Well, then, there's always questions, always going to be questions.
But I think even more this year.
The other thing to think about is, I think we all, we get, we tend to get hung up on the real property tax rate. And that's not the only vehicle to increase revenue. I mean, you know, and I'm not suggesting this, but certainly something that's talked about is we don't charge for trash collection. Most localities do. If you decided to do that, that'd be a way to add revenue into the budget, right? There's a whole host of things that we could consider doing that aren't necessarily a tax rate increase. Davenport mentioned it just briefly, but another factor is that in a year's time, we get much more flexibility on the taxes that we have available to the student increase. Mills rate, lodging rate, all now are available to be increased in a year. You could also implement an admissions tax. All those things would be less burden on our residents, more burden on our visitors, and that might be prudent. And so what do we need to do now to bridge the gap to get there and soften that blow when we do? That's what we need to be thinking about. And that's why I say, consider the long game, not just the short game of how do we get through this year? Because in my experience, when a city does that, next year rolls around and it's so much worse.
I don't have, I have just a lot to think about, but I just thank you for always presenting things in a way that are, although it's a lot, it's understandable at the moment. And I know earlier, when you started, you were like, there's going to be themes for today. And I think I see them, and I took that as a test, as to like, oh, I wonder what Drew is thinking and what's the answer? But, and, and I know this, this may not be the answer you had in your head, but I think a real theme is, you know, just being responsible and, and responsible for, you know, thinking intentionally and the long, the long term and being realistic. And sometimes that is like news we love, and sometimes that's news we don't love, right? And, and either way, you just have to sort of take it in. And I have a tremendous amount of confidence in the staff, you know, that we're all kind of rowing in the same direction in times of uncertainty and kind of, you know, having to make difficult decisions. But, you know, I think as we all digest all the information and confront some of the questions that are, that are coming, I, you know, we're, we're capable and ready to do that. So I have, I'm sure I'll have a thousand questions for you later. But right now, I think it's just reflecting and letting it all sort of sink in about, about what, you know, what, how we're going to move forward.
And, and I too just want to say that I really appreciate all of the information and the effort that's been put in there. I think if we look back over the years too, one of the things I was talking about is sort of being prepared and preparedness and, and the steps that we were able to take and get us through COVID because of preparedness we had and what we have put in place. And so this is another way of being prepared for, for next year and the out years, particularly when we don't know exactly what's coming.
I would just like to say thank you as well, especially for the cohesive manner which the slides were presented. It definitely helps when trying to digest the immense amount of information presented, so thank you.
Thank you all. I just, this is a good time for me to say, it's very difficult to appreciate the amount of work, time, and effort that goes into putting this together so early in the budget process, especially when it's a difficult budget. And I said to many of you before today, this is the most difficult budget I've had to do since I came to Williamsburg. Not the most difficult budget I've had to deal with in my career, but the most difficult in Williamsburg for sure. And over the last week, six or seven of us have not slept a whole lot, day in, day out, including last night. I think for most of us on the team, this is still yesterday. So I just want to say thank you. You know who you are, I'm not going to single you out, for Herculean effort to get this ready for this morning.
Thank you all for the efforts to get us here. It is a reminder that the city of Williamsburg is a living, breathing organism that doesn't shut down. A lot of effort goes into making it what it is that we all appreciate. Another source of revenue, by the way, I just want to add is, you know, we have an abundance of excess property that could be sold, some strategically held for, you know, future opportunities. But we ought to be looking at, you know, what's available.
We actually put a sale of land on capital landing into the CIP. So we're, we're on the same wavelength. We're squeezing the orange for both sides.
All right. Break time, or are we done?
That's all I've got for you today.
Any other questions, thoughts? Mr. Vice Mayor? Pearl of wisdom?
I have, I have plenty.
So sort of thinking about what are the next steps like for, for us?
Sure, I'm sorry, we usually put the timeline at the end again. So next steps are, over the next month, I will continue to refine this, collecting information, like the insurance we'll get at the end of this month, continue to work with James City County on what they're thinking about the school budget, working with the superintendent, the acting superintendent, on what their needs are, talking with you all individually about what you thought about today, answering your questions, talking with the department heads about what else we might be able to do to shave expenses down. And then that all culminates in the publication of my proposed budget at the end of March, at which point I've delivered my budget to you, and it's your turn to take the wheel more directly. Now, I will tell you, of course, because like Councilwoman Karen Shear said, we believe we're a team. And that's really the Williamsburg difference, because I worked for a lot of localities, that wasn't the case. And so by the time we get to the city manager's proposed budget, it's my sincere hope we're already in agreement on what the strategies are going to be so that in that final month, all we're really doing is addressing things that we didn't know were going to happen together. So that's, that's what we'll be doing.
Thanks. Before we adjourn, I'd like to open, have an open forum. If anybody in the audience would like to make a comment or speak? Mr. Wilson? Yes, sir.
I thought it was a great presentation. Appreciate the work and the background that you're taking in. And I'm relieved that we're making a substantial investment in water infrastructure. The question I had was, you know, under the water supply agreement of UG, UG Water Supply, we have a payment of about $18.5 million due June 30th for that second 1 million gallons per day supply. So I didn't see that factored into the budget or the capital plan. And I just wondered, what's the current thinking about how we're going to handle that?
Would anybody else like to make a comment? Nothing else? Would somebody like to make an admission to adjourn?
So I'll leave that be adjourned.
Ms. McKay?
Hi, Ms. Ramsey.
Hi.
Mayor Pons?
Hi.
Would you like to present?
Hi.
Ms. Karen Shear?
Hi.